May I add something to this agenda? Under new business. First up, please.
What? No, you're good.
I would like to give Lee Thompson, I believe, the floor to explain to you an agreement that the Casco Township Board has had since 1994 with Perch Point that you may not be aware of. And he'd like to reiterate that this evening. If I could put him under new business first up.
If there's no other additions or corrections, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one extra item as item A.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the consent agenda with the one agenda addition. Any other questions? Vote all vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Yes, Stevens, yes?
Dan, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay.
I was gonna say, just turned me off right there. Bad start.
I three one.
You're right. Okay. Okay, next one, our website quotes. Myself and Katie, we interviewed four website providers here. You'll see we have this one right up. Here, we interviewed Civic Clarity, Shoemaker Tech Group, Civic Plus, and Web Discovery. You can see their launch costs, yearly maintenance costs, and where they're based. They all provide mobile friendly website. They all help us transition from a dot com to a dot go. Okay, time to complete website varies. And Katie's our website administrator and she'll have the ability to make changes. All those offered that.
Can I ask Katie her opinion on the board that you guys met with?
I mean, I had my recommendation, I think Shoemaker was the best in my opinion, just because they work with so many townships and the MTA too. You guys work a lot with. I know you had some questions, I need about.
Well. The problem is, is I know you guys met with them, but we didn't. And I think a lot of times you get a different first impression when you meet somebody and whether it be in person or through Zoom. And a first impression with the proposal. So, I took some notes. And I actually liked Civic Clarity the best, in my opinion. I liked Shoemaker because we actually met them at a couple of our conferences in the past and I was impressed with them. But when I read through the proposal, it seemed like there was more detail in here. I don't know if Shoemaker offers some of the things that they do because it's not in here, but that doesn't mean that they don't. I just, I don't know. Those two were my top two.
Yeah, those are both recommend by the MTA.
Civic Clarity, they have a lot of things, again, Shoemaker didn't know some of it, but they do a lot of security. They do daily scans with malware. They have someone that monitors the website, like an offsite company, monitors the website for any kind of hacks or any kind of.
You said Civic Clarity.
Yeah, every five minutes. Let's see, they have multiple daily and nightly remote backups. A lot of them, they offer the same where they do the ADA accessibility, which is a big thing now. One thing that I liked about Civic Clarity more than I liked about the Shoemaker is that they offered unlimited training. And in Shoemaker, it said that they will include two hours of remote support. So, unlimited, two hours, I don't know if we'll need it.
Is that support or is that training? Does it differ? I'm trying to.
Civic Clarity also does a lot of Michigan.
So does Shoemaker.
Yeah, yeah, they both.
That's why I like both of them, but if I'm just looking at the reports, Civic Clarity was more detailed with a lot more things. Like I said, that doesn't mean Shoemaker doesn't offer them, it's not the proposal.
Also Civic Clarity's lower price.
Not by very much, so, you know. I, that's my opinion, but I don't feel comfortable making a decision on just my opinion, so you guys tell me your opinions.
Do not be looking at me for technology. I would suggest the two of you pinky swear it out in the parking lot and come to come to a conclusion as to you are the two most techy people here. And I value both of your opinions. And the only thing I'm going to do, if my computer is not behaving the way I think it should, is I'm just going to call out one of your two names. And so.
What? I can't hear anything.
Did you hear anything?
So, that is about my opinion on website technology.
Would you be willing to speak to your recommendation?
I, yeah, I like Shoemaker, like I said, because they work with, I believe it was like 200 something municipalities in Michigan. We liked that they were based in Michigan, they're in Atlantic. I think Civic Clarity was.
So that is also.
I think majority of the ones we looked at were based out of Michigan. I like the fact that, and not saying that Civic Clarity can't attest this either, but they know what we need. If there's something that we're missing, they know what we need because they follow the MTA. They know everything that's required as a township, what we need on our website.
So you're saying that the relationship with the MTA is also somewhat persuasive?
Yeah, because they do their website as well, so, and they know what is required.
They do the website for MTA.
Yeah, so they do.
So I'm looking at the Shoemaker one with the training. It says even with the initial training, we understand that questions are likely to arise after you start working on the site. We also included two hours of remote support.
Oh.
So that's.
Because I, I started, when me and Joe did the, you know, meeting with them, I asked if we could call, obviously if we had questions. And I think they said that's totally fine, it wasn't like an additional.
And I think I'd rather not one if it was just minor questions.
Now, if it's something major, like I need you to change a whole page on our website, obviously that's gonna cost that.
Right.
So who precisely is it going to be our main contact? For the person calling and saying, we need this on the webpage, we need this, we need this, we need this.
Well, we would be, we would be doing the updating. We, don't we?
Yeah, and that's what we're starting to do.
We don't wanna have to call someone and wait a day to have them. So we want, we want the accessibility to go upload.
Oh, and you will have the accessibility to upload immediately.
Yes, and which we didn't have before.
Well, that, yeah, that's.
When we started to have it, and then our website crashed.
And both service offered support in case if they run into trouble, they can call.
Right, but it looked like Civic Clarity had unlimited, whereas the unlimited, I don't know if we'd ever need that. We can usually figure it out.
I tend to, you know, have to stare at things long enough and figure it out.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, I'll look around till I figure it out.
You click till it goes away.
Yeah, no, I always bring it up, the western hemisphere's gonna blow up, so I don't click, no. I'm sorry, I have to take your recommendations. I am unbiased in this area. So enlightening, I know, but.
I tend to really enjoy the recommendation that people who don't have to work with it most correctly are most comfortable. But I think that some of the things you said are quite persuasive.
Right. Well, and one of them, they train two people and then one person left, they would train somebody else. That doesn't mean that we couldn't train.
Each other.
Other people, but they want just two contacts, I think that was Civic Clarity's.
Yeah.
And I think Shoemaker, if someone left, they would train another one and it was like, you know, just transition.
And just Civic Clarity, their presentation wasn't as precise as Shoemaker. Shoemaker had a great representation of it.
Again, like I said, I wasn't involved in that, so reading it, this was my first choice, this was my second. That's my opinion, I like yours.
I'm willing to move that we give the recommendation for Shoemaker, given Katie's and Joe's experience with them on site as well as Katie's company working, because she's gonna be the primary person looking. But it's just a motion? May I receive support or recess?
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support to go Shoemaker Technology to develop the township website.
The fact that they do the Michigan Township Association with seven is much to the point.
So you're gonna, for a launch cost of dollars of $995, yearly maintenance of $600? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Could you support that?
I do.
Okay, any other questions? They vote all vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, the next thing is the annual siren maintenance. This is where we have to, we entered into a agreement that we get each year that we would pay for the yearly cost of that. So the cost for two site for a siren, one site is $425 for, so a total cost of $850 per year.
Well, your signatures are on this form.
Yeah.
So I see no alternative than to honor the contract that you entered into. So I will make a motion to honor that contract. Eight hundred and, is it eight hundred and fifty, did you say?
Yes. We have two sirens, one here at the township hall near one down by the trailer car.
I'll support that.
Yeah, we have motion support to pay the $850 a year for the siren maintenance.
Can I just add in that if we approve this, that it doesn't need to come back, if it's an ongoing thing, I just go ahead and pay it every year, right?
Put it in the budget?
Okay.
Unless, of course, they ask for an increase in fee, then that comes back to the board.
Right.
Okay. All right, vote all vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion paid. Okay, budget amendments.
I did a couple last minute budget amendments for our final budget. If anybody has any questions, it's pretty self-explanatory, it was just minimal. Most of them were like under a couple hundred dollars, so the top, on this sheet, the color coded one, the top account is where I'm taking the money from and the blue ones are where I'm taking the money to.
Understood.
Make motion to approve the budget amendments for the 23, 24 budget.
Support.
Okay, motion support to approve the budget amendment for 2023, 24. Vote all vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
All right, Perch Point agreement.
I'd like to introduce Lee Thompson from Perch Point, longtime member. I can refresh your memory, but none of you were here in 1994. I barely remember it myself. But the township board met with Perch Point and you can give the details of what our agreement was there, Mr. Thompson.
Excuse me, the basic agreement was that Tuesdays and Thursdays would be quiet days, not to be utilized by members of the club for shooting. And in the interim since 1994, the, we have been asked to, and we have been using Tuesdays and Thursdays for police departments to come in and do their qualifications. It's not, not every Tuesday or Thursday, it's asked, required, they come through me, I schedule it. And we've been doing that for roughly, for over 20 years now. And recently, we have been, also, we've added on the high school trap. And with that, I might be. With this one. You regret that.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not gonna keep you long, I understand, I thank you for letting us come and take your time. I just want you to understand, I've been a member of Perch Point for roughly about 18 years. I have a law enforcement background, I retired from law enforcement, and my department was one of the departments that came out and used Perch Point. I can tell you personally, I've seen it, they do not recklessly disregard that agreement that they made with you. They absolutely make sure that it's a police department and they're doing training or qualifications. And when we started this trap team at the Algonack High School, I came to them and asked them for permission to use Tuesdays and Thursdays. What the trap team is, is it's a nationwide program. Right now, there's about 49,000 high school students nationwide that are part of a trap team or skeet team that shoot, okay? And around our area alone, we have St. Clair, Marine City, Richmond, Armada, Mountfish, there's a lot of other teams, even Anchor Bay High School has a team. When I retired from my profession, I became extremely bored and decided to try and figure this trap team out. And I put hundreds of man-hours into the training and facilitation of this team. It is not taken lightly. The National Trap Organization says that you only have to have the head coach take a six-hour online class. That was not enough for me, in my training, in my profession, I know that that is a liability issue for that. So every single coach that we have on our team, and right now we have 15, have taken my six-hour online training class that I had to take. Not only that, we've instituted range safety officers. When I retired, I took all of my law enforcement firearm certifications to the NRA, became NRA certified up to the highest rank for training range safety officers, which is a chief range safety officer. So I take those people and put them through an additional nine hours of training through the NRA itself, okay? So the safety is number one, then fun and marksmanship for these kids. Tell you a little bit about our teams, we started, we're on our second spring, we just started last spring, we started with 27 kids. Out of those 27, we are Title IX compliant, we take every person that can physically and is allowed to by a doctor come out to shoot. We take those kids, whether they're in a wheelchair or not, is Title IX compliant. Last year, we had eight kids varsity lettered through Algonack High School that may not have ever varsity lettered through another sport, okay? In the fall, out of the 28 students that we had come out to shoot, five of those varsity lettered. This season, we are sitting at 48 students that come out and use Perch Point's property. So you can see the size of this. But we don't take it lightly, the agreement that you have with Perch Point, and that's why we're here tonight. We don't want any bad blood between Perch Point and you. And if anything needs to happen that we need to work on or correct to help you guys or to facilitate this through the schools, that's why we're standing here today. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, but I know there's a lot of people here that would love to go home tonight and learn that. So if you have any questions, of either one of us.
I have a question, why, why did we in 1994 choose just Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Because it was their quiet days, what they called their quiet days. There was no other shooting being done at the club on those days, I don't think.
There was, yeah, and this is going back in history, and I wasn't there either, but from what I can gather, looking back through the records that I've found, it was something about, they were, they were shooting seven days a week. And there was complaints about too much shooting going on constantly by members. And it was something about non-members coming in and shooting too. And that was the whole thing. So now it is members only on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Tuesdays and Wednesdays is strictly police departments for their certification, and they, they don't shoot all day. They come in, they shoot, they certify, and they leave. And then, and the, the high school. And that's, and they don't, it's not used every Tuesday and Thursday either.
Has anybody complained, is that why this is brought to us?
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I didn't, you weren't on the board in 1994, you weren't aware, you might have that before, you, yes.
Yeah, it's quite amicable.
I remember you, yes.
Well, I, my son Andrew was on the Richmond trap team, he started when he was in seventh grade. He shot, and he was one of those where he's, he tried football, he tried basketball. He didn't like fit in there, trap was awesome for him. He did it through high school, he went to Ferris last year and was on the Ferris team. And he switched to Central when they don't have one, but I can attest, it's an amazing program. The coaches are wonderful, I'm sure you guys volunteer your time too. So it's, it's amazing, so, I mean, I have no problem with it.
If I may, if I may, I really don't want you to have a misconception. The only reason we're standing here is because it came up internally in our club. We don't want bad blood between this council and our, our club. That's why we are standing here. And also, the team, just so we understand each other, we shoot twice a year, there's a spring and a fall, and those are 10 weeks long. So Tuesdays and Thursdays for that 10 weeks, if we even shoot both of the days, like with 49 kids. I didn't wanna go two days a week, honest to God, I didn't wanna go out for days, but I have to go out.
Kids, they just practice there or they actually?
Our tournaments are there, the way we run our tournaments is each of the trap, we shoot at their own home fields. And the coaches, then I take all those scores and enter them into the computer once a week, they're calculated and put in Michigan-wide as well as conference and then national.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Do you ever extend this courtesy to the 4H youth on these days?
Yes.
Yes, you do. So the 4H.
I mean, do we need to do another agreement?
No, we don't need to, you just need to be aware of the agreement. We have not had any phone calls, I mean, not since, not since before 1994 when everybody was shooting every hour of every day. That, we put a stop to that, and you've complied with that, and we've had no problems since then at all. And since then, I think Marine City is, is developed a trap team, Algonack, of course, and all of the, this is a fairly new sport in this area for us.
It's grew so much.
So good.
We just built a license, we just wanna make sure everybody understands what we're doing.
Yes, and I'm sure if we get complaints at the hall, we will let you know.
Oh, I know.
We will let you know. It's kind of you to come and, and remind us that we have this agreement. And we've not, we've not been sorry about it, not in all these years.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. How many students do you have in your shooting hub?
This year, 48.
Okay, could we come up with extra credits for those students if they shoot every coyote around?
Community service!
Just, just so you understand, this, the clay target, they, they are absolutely, I mean, you understand how the safety runs.
Yes.
And it, it's, there's nothing, for me, it was all made good when I saw a seventh grader talking to a 12th grader about dog hunting. And they were, the 12th grader was sharing stories and telling them how to do it and where to go to learn and things like that. That wouldn't happen in any other sport where a seventh grader talks to a 12th grader, that's exactly.
It's a wonderful program that you have. So if there's anything in hurdle going on with the team, and anybody's saying anything negative, they're just trying to cause you grief. There's no problem here, obviously, with the township. So keep doing great work.
Thank you, and we're known for going to the horse. When, if there's, if there's a problem, we go to the people that would have the problem, and that's you folks, and we don't want anything like that.
Thank you, Coach, thank you.
Good luck in states.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Corporate spring cleanup.
Those I put on the table because Rick got them to me, yes, this morning, actually, it's my, I don't know, this morning. He came out and I had him walk around at the cemetery, there's a lot of branches down. We actually had a couple residents that walked around there and they said there's a lot of branches. And the one for around here, we walked around, there's, I don't know what they are, the drainage with the caps. There's three of them, one of them, the whole pipe is like destroyed, the cap won't even fit in there, it's probably been nicked up by the lawn mower. So, yes, that's on here. And right over here where the ballot box is, the grass is tore up from the snowplows. So I did ask Rick in the fall if he can put those markers out, that, you know, the orange markers. So he said he would do that for us. And I asked him about flowers, but he said this morning, he's been to a couple nurseries, but they don't really have anything out yet.
Oh, no.
So I told him, I wanted to give the cleanup first, so. That's what I put before you.
Jennifer, in regards to the cemetery, we got a woman looking on the grave site, is there a, might dream of that? That somebody's checking them grave sites in the area of cemetery.
What do you mean checking them?
That she's going back in history?
Oh, I don't know, she hasn't contacted us.
You're allowed to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And we would love to, to know some of it too.
Sure, I mean.
Some of those, those headstones, you can't even read them, they're so old.
And a couple of silver wood letters.
A great time ago, we had.
He passed away.
Don't we have any reports on it?
We do, but it was, I don't think he had the old headstone. It'd be nice to know if someone had relatives.
Okay, we, we have the two agreements, we have the one, the Casco Township Hall, spring cleanup for $1,750, and the cemetery cleanup for $1,910.
I'm sorry, who, who, do you have a quote?
Who's doing it?
Sorry, Rick, RX, RX, yeah, sorry. And when I printed it, because I printed it in my colleague, it turned double upside.
They're, they're the ones who did our.
Yes, yes. And he did a cleanup for us and they asked.
That's a lot of money.
Hey, I got a question.
Your pardon?
Doesn't the people that do long work pick stuff up when they do it?
Nope, that's extra. And it's, it's, what is it?
Ladies, run it over?
Like 200 and.
It's a hundred dollars.
It's a hundred dollars an hour per person.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a hundred dollars an hour per person, and they said, I don't know, two or three people out, I think, is what the contract said. So.
A hundred now.
Anybody wanna do it?
Yeah. Don't you get another quote or something, you get from the same person?
We did get several quotes.
We did, not because of this one.
Call the 4H kids. No, I'm just saying, I mean, it's common sense, if you're gonna do long work, pick stuff up where you do long.
Yeah, so we got, yeah, we got D and E's quote, which is astronomical. And Rick's, who did this last year and the year before, or last year at least, the cemetery and here.
Well, if someone else has to get close, feel free.
Yeah, feel free.
But it needs to get done. It's still rather humid, because there's people are walking around the cemetery, and there's branches laying around.
The resident sent me pictures and, you know, the cemetery, and she's worried that things are washing away, and we've got some issues in the cemetery that have to be addressed.
I have my family in a cemetery, and it's my responsibility to clean up around it, too. So.
Yeah, that's a comment.
There's not many people.
You're not picking up the branches.
So the quote you're reading is for lawn care services?
No, it's for cleaning.
No. Just the basic.
Spring cleaning. For, for cleaning up the, the damage from the plows, seeding grass, topsoil link. We have the, the generator installed back here.
Well, now you're putting more stuff into it.
That's, that's all in here.
Yeah, but you never said that at the beginning. You said branches.
Well, that's because we're looking at, we didn't hand these out. This is on me.
Okay, okay, all right.
You're welcome.
I didn't get long, that's what I'm saying.
So the quote's only is seventeen hundreds for the hall and nineteen hundreds for the cemetery.
All right. Hold on. Okay, listen, listen. Okay, good comment. Do, um, do you want to give further quotes or...
I, I am not getting more quotes. If you guys want more quotes, feel free. I don't have time. I have so much stuff, and I'm doing other people's stuff. I don't have time, so.
I, um...
We worked with him before. He did an awesome job, and that's why I want to have, so you guys, whatever the board wants to do.
Okay, you making a motion?
I'm coming.
Yeah, sure, I'll make a motion that we accept these two weeks for cleanup, string cleanups, and the amount specified.
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion for the, from R X to do the cemetery cleanup for one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, and the township hall grounds for one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll support it.
And my reason for making a motion is I think I'm inexperienced.
Okay.
Yes.
It's made in a...
Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
So, we are.
Okay, our motion carries. Okay, we have a letter here, a request from our ordinance enforcement officer Kurt Singstock, that he would like to increase his pay, and he would like to be hired on for two days a week. Is he here? No, he's not here at the moment. I can tell you one thing, Kurt is doing an excellent job for us. He is looking into the issues here to the township, and there's a lot of work to be done. Of ordinance enforcement. There's a lot of work to be done.
So he's asking for an extra day to complete the job done, and repay him what now an hour twenty? Twenty? And he's asking for twenty-six?
And what I'd love to see is more comparison of entities than our size. And the comparisons that I'm seeing here are Ann Arbor, Dearborn, Flint, Lansing, Muskegon. It's a whole different ball of wax. I'm not sure that he doesn't deserve to hear, but that's a different kind of job out there. Those are big cities.
I have to look around neighboring communities and see what they pay their ordinance enforcement officer before making a decision.
So what is his record of completions of what he's already been enforcing?
What's that?
What's his record of completions in enforcement?
He's making progress.
There's some right here, Dan, there's some up here, or are you...
I mean, we've, we've had, um, our previous code enforcement officer, I think Kurt's done more work in the short amount of time that he's spent here than he did in many, many years, from what I see.
He follows through on things.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, my personal experience with Kurt has been negative. When he was approached to address an issue with our neighbor, he told my husband, because I was having heart surgery, my husband didn't tell me this, he spoke directly to my husband and said, "So what do you want me to do about..."
Well, there's...
"I'm sorry, your job? I shouldn't tell you how to do your job."
There, there are certain limits that he can do on his job. Sometimes, if it's to do with a violation of township ordinance, he could act on it.
It is.
But if it's not, if it's, and sometimes neighbors fight, and there's no...
It's against the ordinance, and you know it is.
Well, let me follow up with...
You promised me that all the time, and I never get a delivery. I have never gotten a delivery.
I'll talk to you after the meeting on this issue, okay?
Of, of the twenty-one complaints I'm seeing on the street, not one is... Right, how many, the dust is settled? You know, I hired the first one on the first page, and it says, uh, resolved. It cost me fourteen hundred dollars to get it resolved. And I think you remember the date, the date. Look at me when I'm talking, boy. No, no.
Jim, you listen, right there, it shows the progress what Kurt is making on his ordinance violation.
Them are the complaints. How many have been resolved out of the...
It says right there.
Yeah, no, I can see there.
Twelve. That's all I got. It's been, it was resolved. I know that the one that's seven, five twenty-five, it's resolved, that's right, sort of. We got seven...
All right. Let's, let's focus back on Kurt's request here, okay? All right. So he's asking for twenty-six dollars an hour and a second day to do his job. I could call around to neighboring communities and find out what they paid. We can pick it up from there, okay?
All right.
Yeah, I, I would like to see something more than some computer. I'd like to see more local information about, he works for other counties and cities, so I'd like to know.
This was on the board ticket. Why didn't, why didn't any of this get researched before the meeting, so we don't have to postpone another?
There are...
I just got the board heading on set on Sunday.
I got the board, I was gone. I came up here and I worked Saturday and Sunday, and you've seen how many notes. I read through all of this stuff. I took the time to do it.
If you might could comment about the second day, maybe ask a request of you to perhaps put this motion into two motions? Because Kurt cannot accomplish the job at hand one day a week. So if we have to postpone because there's further discussion needed about his pay, and the second day isn't in question, is it feasible and allowable to put it in two motions, approve the second day, and postpone the... I don't know if progress rules allows that. So I just, because if it's another month, because it always tend to be another month or two.
I would be perfectly fine with having him come in on two days a week. We have, we're that far behind. We're that far behind. And we're getting to the point where people are realizing that we do have to spend that money to go to court if we have to. That letters are not conducive.
I would, I would... They're not working.
It's not working. Court works. And we've only just begun to use that route. Maybe if we use that route in a few situations, um, that will percolate through the whole township, that, yeah, we're actually taking it to court. Um, so I would make a motion to let him have his two days a week. You call around to China Township.
Ira?
Uh, no, Ira's...
Too, too big.
Um, Cottraville Township, St. Clair Township. I'm looking for townships that are our size. St. Clair is too big. Marine City is too big. They have whole police departments working for them. Check those three townships about...
And any others that come to mind? I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Don't get any Upper Peninsula.
Also, come on, also in Collins.
Three dollars a dollar.
Yes, plus one.
We, we, we have a motion, we have a motion to, um, to, to hire, I mean, to add a second day for Kurt there, so he can do his work. And I'll look into the researching of how much ordinance enforcement officers make down and other agreements.
Can I ask that this be taken care of next month?
Yes.
One way or the other.
One way or the other.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I'll support that.
One thing we would like to know is that job one here is Tommy's Park.
Oh, yeah.
It would be, it would be wonderful if we had an address to actually send all the...
Send them together.
All right. Okay, we have the motion support. Any other questions?
Yeah.
I have a quick one. Does he work an eight-hour day? When you say his day, is that eight hours?
Yeah, he, he works six hours.
Six, okay. I'm just curious, what is, what a second day, what...
Okay.
Six hours.
Okay. Random vote on the motion. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Daniel, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
So, we, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we have the code enforcement report. Okay. Any questions on this?
What kind of action would we be doing that it was Tommy's done as an action item? I asked, what kind of action, what, what kind of action are we taking if it was on as an action item? Are we approving, disapproving?
I think it was a put on here that...
It could have been an act, a plan.
Are there any of these going to court that we're looking for?
Not yet, but probably next month I'll be bringing with the board a, a one.
Just send it to court.
Yeah.
We don't have to, we don't have to come here.
Yeah, the board has to approve it. Yeah.
Is that what you want to do, coordinate?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're spending money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you explain what you're talking about? Taking Tommy's to court?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In, in other, in other instances here, they get three letters, and then it goes to our lawyer, and then hopefully...
That's a year.
Yeah, we, our ordinance enforcement officer sends out the first letter regular mail.
Right.
Second letter certified mail. Third letter comes from our attorney. If there's no thing, then we have the option to go, go to circuit court, yeah.
What's the timeframe on that, Joe?
To go to the circuit court?
No, the timeframe on the list.
Two weeks.
Oh.
We're looking at...
Yeah, two weeks.
Four weeks.
So it's a month.
Yeah.
And then it goes to Trump. And then that's another two weeks.
So you're looking at six weeks, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions on this?
Oh, wait. What are we doing with that? It's on me, but actually I need something. That was my question. What are we doing? If we need to vote, if we want to take Tommy's to court, then let's do that.
Well, we can't do that, because Chris Anderson hasn't sent out word of letter.
So this type of like, should we just...
But even when she does, we're going to court. Then we'll, keep on keeping on.
Okay, next one is clerk's conference?
I put on the table the agenda, yeah, the agenda for that. Vicki and I would like to go to that.
Okay. We have motion support to attend the clerk's conference. How much is this?
It is three hundred dollars, and I have a five hundred dollars dollar here from the state clerks association that I can use it now.
All right, so...
Do you actually know what they need?
Yes, we have. It's a two-day, five-day...
Hold up there, folks.
Okay. Says very interesting.
Yeah, they don't make treasurers do that.
Okay. Does this include also, I mean, you're going to be staying somewhere, right?
Yes, in Traverse City.
Need a not to exceed amount?
Yeah.
Someone...
I don't know what the, you'd have to look at and see what the not to exceed amount is. I, I didn't figure that out, so.
Did someone make a motion?
Yes.
Motion to cover costs.
Dan.
And you're going to support.
Yes, of course.
Okay, is this the cover also of the class?
Yes.
I don't know who you're asking to...
I have a city on there all the time.
I'm just glad to see that there's so much education being placed behind it.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion.
While we're on this, we're...
We have motion support.
If Casco Township wants to be a prudent township office, we got two people in each department, am I right, deputies? Somebody comes from, I don't care where, say, seven miles or a mile out of the township to do business here, both them people from any department go, the office is shut. What if they come from Roscommon County, as an example, to do business, and nobody's here?
Well, we usually don't go during the busy time. The clerk's office mostly is for elections. We do payroll at council table. We get all of that done. I check my emails. I check my phone messages.
But I'm saying, if you come from out of town, I don't care where, you come, you have advertising hours, I kind of, people expect to come in here and someone to represent clerk's office department, the door is locked.
I, I've been here for five years, and I have got to have someone come, not during election time, to the clerk's office.
You got business every day in the clerk's office.
I do, but I don't have residents coming in. And if someone, like, when you come in and ask for agenda, we're not the only ones that can do that.
I know. I'm talking to get codes or something like that. It comes out, it's the clerk's responsibility to have that stuff. And if I come twenty-five miles, I advertise, what your office hours are, and nobody's here.
What kind of codes?
Huh?
What kind of codes?
The clerk's office is responsible for people to come in and get information on codes. Is that kind of true statement?
We have nothing to do with the building department.
I'm not talking building department.
Jim, is your, is your point that we shouldn't send people to educational...
Educate them, look. Do we need to hire a third person to keep the door open?
I don't think so.
My office doesn't close until someone's gone.
Between the clerk, the treasurer, the supervisor, Brenda, Katie, I think there's enough people here when the office is open to make sure that somebody gets taken care of sufficiently. We haven't had a lot of complaints to my knowledge of us.
No, but I'm just saying that...
All right, Jim, we heard your thing.
You can always call ahead, too, and see.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's have a vote here. Okay, we have motion support to send the clerk and deputy clerk to the clerk's office.
Who does that?
Okay, roll call vote.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
So, we are.
Motion carries. Okay, High Tech quotes reminder for David Call and Vicki Hawke. We have a quote from High Tech here for a quote for two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Is this per unit, or...
No, it's total.
Okay, total. Okay, I see.
I make a motion to approve the High Tech monitors for Katie and Victoria, the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Support.
Okay, motion support to accept the court for High Tech for the two monitors for a total of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes. Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
So, we are.
Okay. Motion carries. Plan review services. Okay, the building official, Roland Sues, is asking the board to consider to hiring a Mr. Mark Steimack.
Steimack.
Steimack, excuse me. Comply by Design LLC Minnesota Co. Consult for certain commercial industrial plan review purposes. Roland and I have spoken to Mr. Steimack with regard to fees, and he's in the process of putting together the full schedule object. Roland is planning to refer to Perch Point. Roland is planning to refer to Perch Point, going to structure pay for Mr. Stimack as well as Ponzo RV and boat storage.
If I may address the board, there's one aspect of what you have in front of you that will need further discussion. Jennifer was out at the office for a time when these conversations were taking place. Mr. Stimack's hourly rate is there, I believe the last paragraph, he addresses invoicing. And all invoicing for any of commercial or industrial endeavors are handled through the clerk's office. So I explained to Mr. Stimack that once Jennifer was back and able to catch up on her daily duties, that she would be in direct contact with him and they could then work out her plan for invoicing.
And I would handle it just like we do PCE. And if, if we're invoicing and collecting money, he's gonna get charged a service fee just like PCE does, and I don't remember what it is.
A hundred?
Hundred, a hundred fifty. But it'll be the same.
So he's proposing.
Because if he's asking us to collect money for his services, then.
Then, then we give an administrative.
So when we pay him, we just hold back that.
Yeah, okay, fine.
So we propose that he's consulting an hourly rate of eighty, eighty-five dollars.
So I have a question in this letter, it says that they use Bluebeam software. Is that something that you guys, we have access to or that we would?
I don't know that, if Mr. Stimack is doing the review, we would have no need to access.
No.
His software. I, I don't believe that he would do everything.
He would do the report on it, the whole.
Wouldn't it work the same way as the planner where we'd get, we'd just receive the review after the.
Yeah, they'll do a written review.
I just don't know why he.
It used to do that in the, the office and charges the receiver on the review for the cost of the office.
And it says that the, the plans and applications are gonna be in PDF format and transmitted electronically. You guys are good with that too? And this is for all plan reviews?
No.
Oh, no.
No. It's not for all plan reviews.
It's for commercial.
We've got, we've got a couple.
It's for certain commercial, just certain commercial and industrial plan reviews. And I guess Roland and this gentleman will sort this out, Mr. Stimack will sort this out, who does what?
What's that?
You and Mr. Stimack will sort out who, who does which.
Yeah, I take the, these big ones are, are quite involved in those, it takes, I can do them, it takes me a long time though, I mean, it's a lot.
More staff though, don't they?
These guys are working on it, he teaches, and he does Shelby's and he does different ones, so it's kind of matter of fact for him.
So it speeds up our entire process?
Well, absolutely.
Helping people to get their jobs.
And with what else, other stuff that I got going on?
Approved and.
I, I, it just takes too long to be.
And that eighty-five dollars an hour, that's, I don't know anything about, that's decent.
Yeah, it's all of that, that's all.
Well, that's what he's requesting, so.
Well, I'm just saying that's not outrageous, I, I don't know anything about that, so.
He did, you know.
Well, if you're happy with this arrangement, and if you're happy with this arrangement, and, and you decide.
Too, you know, I go to classes too.
That's right.
I'm, I'm well satisfied with what he does.
Okay.
He's pretty hard to beat.
It will just move things along more quickly.
Well, yeah, and the accuracy was really, probably better than what I could get in up there.
Very good. Good.
No, we're talking about thirty-eight thousand feet up a building and so on, there's a lot to that, you know, there's skaters, this, whatever it might be.
So Roland.
Lot of work.
Okay. All right, so.
What were you just gonna try to ask me?
No, so you feel you're on, you see him just strictly on industrial and commercial?
Yeah, just on the big stuff, I know in smaller ones, there are no, no problem at all, but when you get into the big building, you're, you know, you're looking at sprinklers that we don't have and so on and so forth.
Gotcha. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have, we have a motion.
Make a motion to, um, we are all, accept the proposal for consulting services from Mr. Stimack.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept the consulting services with Mr. Stimack, any other questions? Roll call vote.
That's for the ones that Roland chooses not to do.
Commercial and industrial ones. Okay.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven chess.
Stoker, yes.
Okay, I have motion carries. Okay, planner proposals? I went out and I got four different planning services, I got them from McKenna. There's an associate, I have Casalab Planning, that's our, that's our Karen Laverne, we have Wade Trim, and we have Kyle Alwork.
So you spoke to all these, these more, and what's your opinion?
My opinion, I think the best one for right now with Costco would go with Casalab Planning. Reason why, I think she offers the best, not just the best pricing, she has a history with the township, I think plan commission works well with her, they're comfortable with her, and she's been trained by one of the best in the business, and Steve gave me his word that he would help her out. Whenever she needed.
I have one question, she's carrying errors and omissions insurance?
Errors and omissions?
Yeah.
They had, I don't know.
I'd like to know.
Okay.
Did, um, did any of this, not that the planning commission would vote on it, but was this brought before them for their opinion, that they're, they work with the planners, the building department works with the planners, did any of that, did they get any input?
Well, I did ask, I, I've heard from some members of the plan commission that they feel comfortable working with Karen. They, and they, one thing I'd like to allow Karen too, these big ones here, we're gonna be one of their small clients, and they'll probably stick us with a junior planner.
Well, they, most of them said associate planner, if you, if you read through the proposals, right?
Oh, yeah, and, and also too is, we fall down, we had that problem with Gifford Webster's, we were having trouble with them getting with us on returning information, that's why I went with Steve, he got it. And right now, Brenda, if you don't mind, what's your opinion?
Well, to be very candid with you, I know that at one of your previous meetings, Karen was your one and only proposal, and I think for that reason perhaps alone, it may have soured you to her because you had no other option.
I'm not sour.
It was like, take this, no, I mean originally, when she was the only one on the, was probably. But since I've had the task of working so closely with the planning commission, Gina, with me partnering and getting the packets and the information, um, we've tried to speed up the timeline in which these reports and reviews are ready. And for the last two meetings, I can tell you that the packets were delivered two days prior than previously delivered. And I have asked Karen if we could speed that timeline up, because without her report and that of Mr. Massey and the fire chief, the packets cannot be delivered. And Karen has delivered on that. And I didn't realize how much I really didn't know about the depth of the responsibilities. And she has answered questions, she's spoken to Katie when I'm not at my desk, she's given Katie the same information she would give to me, and we have a very good working relationship, but I know the ultimate decision is yours.
Yeah.
And even if it were to be for, I believe her contract might be for one year, if we could maybe give it a try for one year and see how it goes from there, but of course, it's your discretion.
What I also want to look here, and she's building up a business, she has a few communities in the area, and I talk to them all, they all like working with her. So she develops this, we're one of her main communities that's, that she's gonna give us undue attention, and Karen does get back what she did today, called her, she got back with me, she's in fifteen minutes.
Total that we hired for a year. I don't know what the determination elements are, but if, one or another, if we are there for her or want to terminate, I don't see those divisions.
Do you support that comment?
I do.
Okay. All right.
But I'm also concerned about, you know, the, you know, professional insurance for consultants.
Okay.
All of us, I think it's important, I don't think it's a quid pro quo, but I think she should probably.
All right, I will.
It's not that expensive from at least my preliminary research.
But?
Plus it a hundred bucks.
Okay, who made the motion to hire Casalab Planning?
Well, Dan.
Dan, okay, and who scored it?
I did.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? And also too, her fee schedule reflects ours, the other ones are very expensive.
And they're different?
Yeah.
They're more subdivision type?
Yeah, yeah.
Really expensive.
Well, I feel comfortable, you guys are comfortable, the planning commission's good with it, I don't work with them, so I'm good with her.
Yeah, I think. Okay.
Yeah, it's super good, the building department is, is comfortable there, that's the main thing.
I would ask though, in the future, we get these on a more timely basis, because the one was dated January, it would be nice to have these right away.
Well, there's, I was checking out a couple others, I, I tried, when I went, I even contacted Rod O'Roy to see if there's any independent.
I mean, we can't afford people like Wade Trim.
No.
Don't even think about it.
And Rod. Rod.
Those people are burning it.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what he's doing downtown.
Yeah, that's wasting time.
So I was looking, I did, there's a couple other ones, that took, took some time on that, yeah, so, I did a pretty thorough search on it. And there's, and there were some firms that said we would not accept them. Okay, all right, we have a motion to hire Casalab Plan and, and support, any other questions? Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven chess.
Stoker, yes.
Okay. Motion carries, all right, this is a invoice, eleven zero nine two three for one thousand, two, one thousand two hundred ninety dollars. This is on for oversight of the park on page one of construction.
Can I ask, can you have these emails to me, even if she sees me on them?
Okay. We have one from the fall, it's just, there's so much flurry of emails during construction.
If, if it comes through to people, then it'll get caught and it'll get all over.
I got to talk to them. Yeah, so, okay, this one is, okay, for one thousand two hundred ninety dollars, any questions? Any, can you have motion on this?
No, remember that guy?
Yeah.
That's what Jennifer learned.
Yeah, it was just back when they're doing construction of the park, there were so many emails going back and forth about the thing, and this one just slipped through the cracks.
I'll make a motion to pay Campwell one thousand two hundred ninety dollars for invoice number one, one oh nine two three.
Okay, we have a motion support to pay the invoice one one zero nine two three for one thousand, one thousand two hundred ninety dollars, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Uh, Steven chess.
Stoker, yes.
Okay, next one is invoice, this is invoice here, zero three one four two four for one thousand one hundred forty dollars.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for government, I support that.
Okay, we have motion support, the, the invoice was one thousand one hundred forty dollars, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yeah, sorry, Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven chess.
Stoker, yes.
This is, um, fire run for Mr. Simeon, okay.
He had a very bad day.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we don't have, we don't collect taxes for fire runs?
No, we do that.
So part of our ordinance is that we bill out for the fire runs, and this gentleman wrote a letter asking us to waive that fee, so you can read it.
I mean, his, the only thing he says he doesn't realize is he's gotta pay it, I mean.
He didn't realize what.
Most people don't, they're gonna pay.
Yeah.
Most people don't, and we have fire.
Yeah, and most, most people pay their bills, right?
Well.
No, we send a lot to collections. Really?
You just feel bad for the guy, that was a very bad day for him.
Yes.
Sparked your bigger letter.
I'm just concerned about.
Precedent.
Yeah, more about fairness, some people pay, some people don't, he really, when you get a request and the person never got any services that they really needed.
What happened to him?
That's different in a sense, but this guy, they came there, they helped him, and some people get help and they just pay, others get collected, so I'm, I'm kinda, the fairness issue kind of bothers me, as it did with the last one with me.
Well, you said that you can send it to collection.
No, no, I, I, I don't know, I, I think.
Send it to collection.
Yeah, but what did he, what?
He didn't say he was.
He didn't say he was gonna.
I think I talked.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what, what did he do?
Okay, hold on.
I can explain.
Get a car fire, the fire people came and put it out.
Absolutely. We have waited for other people before, he's an older gentleman, he was taking his car, he thought he had fired on insurance on his vehicle, he has everything but, but to be able to fire, so, because it's an older car. I offered it, I said you could write a letter to the board, I offered it to everybody when they call and complain about it, I said I don't have the authority to waive anything, the board can waive it if they feel they wanna do that. He never said he wasn't gonna pay it, he just said it was a lot, and he wasn't expecting it, because most people don't expect it till they get it. We charge, you know, people's house burned down, we charge them as well, and most of the time their insurance covers. Yes.
You allow people to pay in increments.
Yes, I just gave him an option, they always give us an option, we have waited for people before and we have not waited for people for those, and we have those conversations with people when they were here.
He doesn't offer any kind of things, hardships and that, so.
Well, he had to tow his car, he lost everything, his groceries, all of that, he put that in the letter. Yeah. And he was out of a lot of money, so I told him if you wanna write a letter to the board and explain.
So she did her job, bring him before the board, so he'll send it back.
Understand. All right, what does the board wanna do on this one?
Pay it.
Pay it.
Pay what?
His bill.
Okay, his bill.
Now, we.
How much is it?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars.
Oh, my God, come on.
Split it in half.
I kind of think that we should not approve so many of these requests.
Is that many, is there that many of them now?
I don't know, it's not fair to the people that just pay.
It does make it.
Yeah, and sometimes there are extenuating circumstances where the fire folks came because somebody called them and they didn't call them and they got billed, you know, and nothing happens, that's still a little different.
Why not give them that far?
Okay, no.
We have hardship.
No, let, let the board speak, okay?
Could I do?
Okay, all right, what's the board wrong, want to do with this? Dan, you make a motion on this?
I don't think we have to make a motion unless we're gonna pay it, I'm not gonna make a motion to pay it, I, I mean, I.
You would need to make a motion either to accept his letter or.
Deny it.
Or deny it, accept his request or deny it, that would be what your motion would be.
I, I make a motion to deny it.
Okay, we have motion here from Janet Kaczynski to deny it, we have support.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion and support to deny this request. Okay. Roll call vote, we could just.
I think we can just.
Okay.
Do you?
I don't think it needs to be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
However, we could take up a collection.
Alright.
We can do the Catholic thing.
A person up close, that's the best.
Okay, hold up, listen up, this one is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero eight, resolution for renewal of millage for road improvement maintenance, okay, this is, this is our road millage we use to help maintain our roads with the Casco Township, for the limestone haul, for the, um, for the chloride, for the ditch mowings and that, each year, this is money well spent. We enacted this in twenty twelve, because at the time, during the great recession, they had a, they had a lot of property values drop, plus they had a cut in state revenue share, and we had to make up for that. Since then, this millage has proved invaluable of keeping up the township roads.
It's not a new tax.
Yeah, it's not a new tax, it's just a renewal of the current millage, and we have to pass a resolution or to put it on the ballot.
So this is the one that we have, that you guys have a determination on what roads get done, or is it all county debt?
No.
Yeah.
We have a road.
Because I've, I've asked a lot of questions.
Well, I wrote, okay, summer, how many summers are they? Yeah, I mean, for local roads, that's, local roads are township roads, each year, like, north-south gets limestone, east-west, this year it's gonna be north-south will get the limestone, so, yeah, these are for local township roads. So this doesn't include division road, or grassed, or Palms Road, or county line, or Main City Highway, or Church Road or Mycelium.
Which, I, no, I understand that with the, with the paved roads, but.
Yes, St. Clair Highway is a local road. Okay.
From those back resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight for the mill, renewal of the millage for road improvements and maintenance, which is expected to give us over two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to maintain our roads in Casco Township.
Okay, we have, we have motion support to adopt, um, resolution, to adopt Article two, section three, oh, to adopt resolution, um, two thousand twenty-four dash zero nine, okay.
Zero eight.
Oh, zero eight, I'm sorry, oh, excuse me, okay, Roque Albo?
I don't sense, I don't think they Roque Albo.
Okay, just, okay, all, okay, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
What happens after, I mean, we do a resolution, so then, now what?
It goes on, now.
And how does that happen? I've never, I've never.
We said our L forty twenty-nine.
Right.
Built it before.
Built it before, so I don't know what steps need to be taken.
I will research it tomorrow morning.
If we automatically renew our operating on the L forty twenty-nine.
I have to send something to the county, so I need to know what.
This is what you need to say.
Is there something else that goes in addition to that? That's what I need to find.
I'll find out first thing tomorrow, okay. Perfect, I got over one, great commission anyway, okay, um. No, I'll call the controller, John, this is. Okay, next one is, um, adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero nine, this is to adopt amendment Article two of section three definitions, Article fourteen, section accessory building.
These are the new ones?
Yes. Okay, the main thing is there with hoop buildings? Any questions?
So there's new ones, right here. We have these. So, there was, um, something was attached to it that wasn't correct, so that the correct attachment is in those.
I see, could you pass that one, two more? No, the whole thing. The whole thing goes to the county?
Okay, oh.
Maybe another, there's two of them that go together, this is non, and this is time.
This goes to Dan?
Does everybody have one now?
Yes. Alright, okay, these are one, these are, um, okay, and these are.
So in reading this first one, the oh nine, um. We're just looking at the stuff that's in red, correct? Okay, so the stuff that is in red is new, however, on this first page here, towards the bottom, under G, it says the township clerk may issue a visitor's permit, so that the visitors will be permitted to park. I'm a clerk, I know nothing about this visitor's permit.
Or is it building?
So either we get this visitor's permit, or we take this out, because we can't have that.
So if someone has a recreational travel trailer in their backyard and somebody comes with it, rather.
They wanna stay.
And they wanna stay, they need a visitor.
But again, this, stuff like this, if I don't know about it, and then someone's gonna come and ask for it, and.
I think you would probably refer them to the plan.
Well, yeah, because this stuff is put in place long before many of us.
Right, but we run into other things where we're supposed to have a book or, and record and stuff, and stuff like this, when we see it, we need to.
Yeah, we need to know.
Well, sometimes there are things in the ordinance that was put in for a certain reason at a certain time, and maybe circumstances change, it doesn't make.
Then the ordinance needs to get changed.
Right.
Because that's not.
Then it'd be a separate action.
Permit, book, in order to.
And it says township clerk, I know nothing about this, is what I'm saying.
Jonathan, this would be a different change then, I mean, we.
No, I, I get that, I'm just bringing this to your attention, because that needs to be taken care of.
Then we'll, we'll get to the, I will, however.
The planner?
Yeah.
The planner?
Yeah.
There's a question for clarification on that.
Good luck.
Well, I mean, so, you said with the campers and like visitors, so if, because I, I have a horse trailer with, with living quarters in it, if my relatives come from Iowa, and they wanna stay for a week, and they wanna stay, have their own little area.
Don't tell me about it.
But no, I mean, that means I would have to come and get a permit so they.
A visitor's, it's for me.
But not if they stay in my house.
I'm just doing it out of curiosity.
No, no.
Okay, let's, okay, let's, let's get back to choosing the changes.
She doesn't like the changes, she doesn't like what's written in the first place.
No, that's an old part of the law.
It's not a change, I just, it was in bold, so when I got this copy, it wasn't in color, so I thought all the bold stuff was changes, so that was brought.
So we're looking at Article two, section three hoop building, hoop house, fabric building, et cetera, et cetera, da-da-da-da. We're still not issuing building permits for trailers. Visitor's permits, I've never heard of.
Moving along.
Is there something?
Well, yeah.
It is a business.
Does not contribute to your job.
Alright. Okay, what's, what's the board's desire on this?
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna, are you talking about the?
Yes, that's to adopt that language of the ordinance.
Right, this already went before the planning commission, it went to the St. Clair County, not the college, the planning commission, they gave us their recommendation, so basically, to approve it, the board has to do a resolution, so we can put it in our book.
Right.
That's what's coming with ours, this has been going on for.
About six months.
Alright.
I make a, a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, sorry, adopt.
Alright, we have a, okay, we have motion support to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero nine.
Can the county approve this?
Yes.
It's, and the attachment?
Yeah.
It's attached.
So.
It's attached.
Okay, um.
Can the planning thing, the planning commission approve this?
Yes, they do. Okay, is all in favor?
Aye.
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 May.
May.
And I will contact the planner, take the test, move on with this. Okay, this is, next one is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero ten to adopt, um, adopt amendment Article seventy-five site planner view. Before, an applicant, before they could go before the planning commission, would be fourteen days, we're increasing that to thirty days to give the planning department, the building department and our planner law to review these.
It's fifteen to thirty.
Yeah, fifteen to thirty, I see that.
I think it's a fourteen.
I make a motion to adopt resolution, adopt amendment to Article seventy-five.
Just a resolution.
You just.
Twenty twenty-four dash ten.
I got you.
Site planner view.
I support.
Okay, okay, we have a, to adopt, we have motion in support to adopt resolution twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four dash one zero. I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So just as a side note, um, those summaries, there'll be a summary submitted to the Voice newspaper tomorrow to be published next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, and the amendments become effective upon publication. So the ordinance folks will be changed, and website updated, so that what you approve will be.
The website will be updated when we.
Yeah.
But now they only goes and go back from the date that they're done, I think, before that's grandparented.
The ordinance is, the ordinance is available online, still, at this time.
If they can do that on the website.
Our website.
I don't know what's happening. So I was trying to surprise because, what's that, it's down, but it didn't seem down.
And if you wanna copy, if you have trouble, you go, stop in the hall, we'll provide you a copy.
We got it back, but we can't, we haven't changed it.
Okay, next one?
Oh, I just, I have board comments, but just move on.
Okay, um, we have, um, resident comments, does anyone would like to address the board on any issues?
Hi, here you go.
Here.
Here, step right up.
My name's Anthony Manny, and I, I go, I talk to you, live on fifty-eight sixty-four in regards to LMZ rock crusher backyard.
I'm sorry?
ZLM.
ZLM rock crusher?
Yes.
I thought, oh.
No, and how far they got the piles up there with the excavators, and their belts running? I mean, you got it in, in the neighbor's backyard, I live across the street, and I can actually sit in my living room and watch out the window while they load up, who approved it?
Well, the ZLM was approved by the planning commission for operations there.
For the rock crusher? That's supposed to be heavy industrial, they're not, you guys ain't heavy industrial in Casco. That's heavy industrial there, chartered's tried it, and they had to move down to twenty-six, so Casco cannot allow that. And for you guys, anybody here can drive down Church Road and park in front of my house, or pull into the neighbor's house across the street, watch them load up, I mean, we're talking an excavator as high as your house, sitting on top, loading up.
He's on a hill that's just high.
Yeah, really, anybody can go there and see it, would you guys like that in your backyard? Seriously, would you like that in your backyard, and you guys are permitting that? Dan, nice, this goes by now. Nobody's gonna say a word?
No, I all.
And the lights, and the lights, and the lights, listen, listen. And another thing, and I don't know if this is true, somebody said, is that zone half a mile back, heavy industrial?
Industrial?
Industrial. It is?
Well.
Who approved, wait a minute, who approved that?
Well, that's been zoned for a long time back there.
How far, a quarter mile back off twenty-six?
Yeah. Where's the zoning map up there?
Yeah, but you guys didn't consider, you guys didn't considerate the, the people that backs up to that property line.
In our ordinance, we said they have to have a buffer, like either.
Their, what, their buffer, is their buffer is, is loading up, their excavator, loading up their trucks, that's their buffer, John.
And we're all put, we're all on Church Road here.
We are, everybody's here.
They're on Church Road.
Couple of them couldn't make it.
Yeah.
In fact, a neighbor that is in her backyard, his wife works nights as a nurse, he's babysitting the kids right now, you try sleeping that during the day, and see what happens. I'm, I'm, I'm playing, you guys haven't seen that.
This is the first I've heard of it, so.
Are you serious?
I, yes, yes.
You guys are seeing, I was like.
Obviously, you're not communicating.
You and I talked about it.
Yes, we, yes, we did, and I came back probably two months ago, when I was complaining about the lights they have up there, they still have them back there.
That was never brought to the board, as a whole board.
Yeah, but somebody had to approve that, that was going, that was happening, the work that's going on there. If that's the case, wait a minute, if that's the case, then.
Wait a minute, let me explain.
Okay. They were approved for their operation there, sometimes things were brought in there we're not unaware of, that happens. I understand, I understand.
But if the, if you guys don't let us know, then we don't know.
You guys never drive down Church Road?
I don't, no, they don't. No, I live on, I live that way.
Take a drive down.
Okay.
I mean, I, I.
The lights are on, the lights are on, we're a quarter mile back off twenty-six, and they have the lights on.
It seems the enforcement officer needs to go down.
Exactly, I agree.
Talk to you and the other neighbors that have issues with this, so we can.
See, what you guys approve, do you tell me you're gonna approve, you're gonna approve of what they're doing right now?
I don't think we approved it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't.
Well, I, I can tell you what, since we called and talked with you.
They shut down.
They shut down, they shut down because they know they're in violation, they shut down, obviously, that full goalser, whatever they were doing today, that we always hear the backup lights, beep, beep.
Oh, hell, you guys wanna hear backup and clanking of the trucks going on now and stuff?
Shut up, and they shut it right.
You're screaming that screen.
When did you call?
Yeah, but, but, listen, listen, I wanna say, if that's the case, have a little consideration and put your operation on the other side of your property line. Don't put it on the property line of the, of the neighbor on, on Church Road.
Yeah, so our ordinance does.
Yeah, or, you know what, move out towards your building, see how you like it with all the noise going on.
Yes, there are firemen, we do have standards for screaming and for noise and dust.
Yes, I understand, I understand.
And we won't even get into the other properties that are even east of that, where the trucking companies are, that they tend to come home, right, they get off on the Friday, Thursday, whatever it is, and then fire rounds and wells of gunpowder.
That's nonstop there.
Okay?
Of gunpowder?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I have called this numerous times, they have been there, okay, I get it, you know, you gotta get out, and you gotta fire off your gun or whatever, you can carry it, maybe you have to fire it, but I'm, I'm just telling you, it is nonstop. I walk in the backyard property that butts up to that, and sometimes I get very nervous to walk out there on my property, because there's no burbs, there's nothing, and they're getting out, they're trucking company, and they're fighting us.
When you, the discharge of firearms like that to call the sheriff's department is.
I did.
Yeah, but by the time they show up.
What did they do? Yeah, they got, this is going on for four or five years.
These are businesses that don't.
You know what, it's just like.
Nine six.
So, I'm getting back, back, back to this, so, are you guys gonna do something about this?
We will check it out, and we'll have our.
So you're gonna check it out?
Yes.
I have to have it seen.
Oh, and, and, they think that they can burn anything they're, they want there, I got video of them torching black smoke, nonstop there, okay? We got an enforcer, somebody needs to go over there and take care of it, and I, and I'm gonna say this on hand, I thought it was Clancy doing it, but it wasn't, it was ZLM, it's the ZLM, because I took a Clancy D construction. Because I took a Clancy, D construction, you know, concrete, he was him, it wasn't him until I went over there.
So it wasn't Clancy?
No, it wasn't Clancy.
That's my mistake.
That, I found out it was Z L M after I walked back there.
Oh, here and I smack Mr. Clancy upside.
No, 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 I apologize. Okay, I'm hot.
I apologize.
Uh, seriously, because it's gonna be an issue, it really is.
All right.
We'll be here next Tuesday for the planning commission.
I'll be there too.
The ordinance is, we want to know what the, what their zone, that Z L M for that rock crusher.
They're supposed to be heavy industrial, they cannot do what they're doing right now, there's no way, impossible.
All right.
Well, I don't know if you were at the township meeting, I went there last night.
Yeah, that's a bad, that's bad, yeah.
They, they, they slapped it down zero, they're trying to get heavy over there and you better do it here.
Yeah, I know.
But they can't, they moved their operation down to twenty-six and B twenty because that's where the heavy industrial's supposed to be. All them guys doing Z L M, doing what they're doing, they can't be in there, they ain't no way.
I don't know if there's an ordinance you could put on those companies that, I mean, I can't imagine their insurance company lets them shoot out back or their...
Oh, well, that's not, that's, that's...
You guys, you should be going right there, you can see that, you can see the burm at the electrical company there.
I got the...
It's not, it's not going back to my property, it's headed right there. Yeah, shoot from the back, you can hear them.
In fact, the D N R, the D N R is there.
My name is Carol Menny, and the evidence of that place that is shooting, and they were shooting a couple of weeks ago, I went out to check the horses, it was eight-thirty at night and I was out there screaming and I was gonna call the motherfucking cops on it, they're shooting in our house. Here's the address, nine-six-four-six, Marinsy Highway.
Okay, you should have, you should have called the police.
Yeah, but just, Joe, by the way, we do, they end up leaving, they end up leaving.
Well, the one thing about the discharge, we have no authority.
Oh, I understand that, but I actually went there, I actually went there and tried to explain to them, you know what the guy said? Well, the owner said, "We can come out here and shoot anytime," and they're from the city.
Okay.
That's...
Well, it's a state and you know, if they don't have adequate backstop, it is, it is against the law to fire.
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you want to step where we are on this far side?
I do.
St. Clair County Sheriff doesn't come down here and some, till somebody's dying.
They do, but they don't have a...
They don't come down here until they're coming down here and somebody's dying, because they don't patrol this area.
We, we will check out the rock crusher, the operation of that, the other stuff, contact the sheriff's department or the state police.
The neighbor that is behind it, Z L M.
And with them, yeah, just keep calling up and they'll build, they'll build enough up and then they will get them, it's how it works.
It wasn't shooting not that long ago where the bullet went through the dam, the window.
Yes, there are...
We understand confiscating weapons, look at the trajectories, it really gets something about it, so there's maybe...
It takes, it takes a lot with firearms.
All right, okay, is there anybody else?
I got a question. Nope, never mind, I'm not talking to you. This would be for the clerk's department, do you have forms for freedom of information? If I want to request a form, do you?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to see about that too, probably.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, none?
I have board comments. So I have a couple of follow-up questions. Where are we at with the master plan?
Master plan, they, we're getting close to completion on that. Karen and I talked about it today, we have to get some information from the county so they could add it into the master plan.
Okay, because according to the original timeline, it was supposed to have already been approved, is that something that we're gonna get in trouble for, for it not being?
We, because we had a couple of meeting cancellations in there because there's nothing to discuss.
Well, yeah, December it was, it was canceled because there was nothing to do, but there was this to do.
Don't you expect to be focused on some volunteers?
Yes.
Yeah, well...
There isn't, there isn't.
No, they sent out questionnaires.
So what's the timeframe now, what are we looking at until it's being completed? Do you have that as a... That's mine, so you can look at it, but I want it back to us now. So what are we looking at for completion, so it was supposed to be, where are we looking at now, where are we at? Are we like at December where it says development and action plan? Or are you way out in July to November where it says repair draft plan? Because if I look at it, that's kind of what it looks like to me is that we're back to July of twenty twenty-three where it says repair draft.
Okay, um, but Steve should have, Steve should be with us until, he would like to support this master plan.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Um, next up, where are we at with network computers?
I talked to Chris today, she finally got ahold of the cyber and, um, for the government, and he said that he'll get that for, um, a price.
Okay, how about the PS port grant will be moved back?
PS port grant, they'll be put on hold from next year so we could pay off, um, the construction of phase one and phase two.
The reason on PS port is because this is stuff that we postponed from last, so if it's postponed, it needs to be addressed so that we know what the outcome is, you can't just, we're gonna, we're gonna not tell the board, but we're gonna just keep it, you know, put that whole till next, we do know that.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, scrap tire, clean up ground.
Yeah, I talked to China Township and it is a van trailer. Um, we could secure it, put a lock onto it, we could post no dumping around it. Problem is right now, we don't really have a, especially if we're gonna start construction, we don't have a site to put.
So what, just on hold and...
Until we determine what's going on back here, I'd say, um...
So I'll ask them. And then we could...
So for the dumping containers, yes, would we have cameras pointed at it so if someone was just dumping in front of it after it's closed?
Yeah, we have the cameras.
Then what are you gonna do? But, yeah, you're, are you gonna get someone's license plate? If you can catch them, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, we just gotta follow what's up.
Yeah, that's a good point, Gina said that we find as much as we have, we might do it.
Especially with our, with our...
Joe, could we not just take, if they already have the trailer in East China, right, could we not just take, would be included, would we just take it there?
Go East China, we're trying to do a, we're trying to do a... We can't have a great big trailer out here, I'm not, I don't even know how I'm gonna get cement trucks in here.
That means if they already have the trailer, can't we just, would it take it there?
Let me ask that of the Chinatown shit to the right, I can't see a lot of problem with that, I think he may be, but I can't speak for him.
I just think that was not...
I know that way.
Okay, anything else?
Yep.
We possess the word, because we don't know the word. Them strain the tree lines, we can see the...
Stuff like that.
Try to catch them.
Yeah, it's, uh, Karen?
Try to catch them.
You, you...
I, that's what I looked at, if you would look at it, I put a copy of the letter and then I put a copy of the email that she sent, she had said she ordered it to work, which is pretty purchase assignment. We did not purchase a sign from work, we purchased a sign from Sign Fabricators, I can pull the invoice out and the canceled check and the quote that's from Sign Fabricators. So for her to pass this on to another company is BS, yeah.
From where else?
Yep. And then one last thing, I put this in there, if anyone wants to go to the MTA quarterly meeting, let me know and I'll let them know.
One more thing, you need a clock in here.
We know, we know.
All right, um, I got, I have a thing about, um, two weeks ago, um, myself, Gina, Dan went on the road, Angel Road Tour, the roads look pretty good, we talked about areas, lots of areas that need to be ditched. Um, I talked to, there's, we have about ten thousand left over from that first ARPA money and Mike Zofletz, our area foreman, said, um, culvert right out here at Lindsay Road and Melton Road needs to be replaced and a culvert just a little bit further up Melton Road. Um, it'd only take about a day, day and a half to replace each of those culverts and I gave them the dates of early voting and election day so they don't interfere with that. Um, and, um, I'm waiting on quotes on what it'll cost to overlay the last two miles of St. Clair Highway and we're thinking about using our match grant money we get for the, to combine that with some of that ARPA money that they had from the county to do those last two miles.
What's that?
Yeah.
That brings up a question I had, because we, you, we discussed at the last meeting that they're gonna redo Grashit, correct?
Yes.
Where's the D T R gonna be for those trash haulers?
Is that up? I'll find out, we're going trash hauler.
I just, I just thought about that earlier, dropping it off.
I, it was brought up last meeting about having diagrams of the road construction projects, the road commission recently had computer issues like a hack.
So they've been down.
And I'll get those up for the, the Grashit rebuild, the B C road, um, left turn lane.
When is that supposed to start?
What's that?
When is Grashit supposed to start?
It's gonna start, I think, like in July, so.
On B twenty-one?
Sure.
Twenty-six? You're putting like left turn lane on B twenty-six?
Yeah, Marinsy Highway.
Oh, I wasn't waiting till the line, not in...
It's part of the line.
Oh, it's part of the line? All right.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, sorry.
All right, hold on.
I'm seeing some out, um, email a mile ago about us signing up for the B program, have you done that?
No, not yet.
That's with the, um, internet?
Yeah.
Broadband?
Yeah.
Are you gonna do that? Because I think there's a deadline by the end of the month if I'm not mistaken.
B program.
Through the twenty-third, April twenty-third, so you're gonna do that?
Yes.
Okay, um, we, I put a survey on the Facebook page that has to do with that B program, so I know not everybody goes on Facebook, but if you guys feel the need to fill it out, you're supposed to just basically verify your address, whether or not you have broadband or high speed, low speed, no speed, so that's on there. Also, we were in training today and it was brought to our attention, there will be a postage rate increase July fourteenth. It is going, first class stamps will be going from sixty-eight cents to seventy-three cents. Get your forever stamps before July fourteenth, yes, yes. An extra ounce stamp is going from twenty-four cents to twenty-eight cents, that's a sixteen point six percent increase and the three ounce is gonna go from one fifteen to one twenty-nine. July fourteenth is gonna...
And this is just the start?
They said it's gonna keep going. Of course it is, just an FYI for you guys.
All right, does the board, does the board have any other comments? Okay. Yeah, we, we have, okay, um, we have a motion to adjourn.
Can I say something quick?
You took my job.
Hold on.
I got something.
I, um, I own a business at the corner of Lindsay and Palms and I am hosting the petition I have for actually St. Clair County and Macomb County against the state having legislation over those solar and wind farms. So if anybody would like to sign that either today or stop at the shop, you can sign it there.
Thank you for the honor.
Thank you, I'll sign right now. Okay.
And if you're the one, don't sign another one.
I'm letting you do it.
You're only signed once.
I'll support it though.
Okay, all in favor, adjourn?
Aye.